Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right on time.
We did good.
Yes, yes.
Well, it's 6:00 PM and I will call the meeting to order. You'll all stand with me and we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing. Mr. Triplet, would you do our invocation, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we love you and we come before you tonight. God, we just thank you for all your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Father, we thank you for our community, God, and all the blessings that you've blessed us with. And Father, we lift up this mayor and council as they come together, Lord, to conduct the city's business. God, we pray for wisdom, discernment, guidance, and direction on each one of them for each matter that is brought before them. Father, we pray for each citizen of our city and community. We ask you to bless them. We ask for your protection. We ask for your guidance and provision, Lord. We love you and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Triplet, do we have any citizens' comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, moving on, we have the minutes from our August meetings. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Minutes have been approved. Mayor and council announcements. Mr. Ogden, would you like to start?
Yes, and I noticed you have a proclamation, so I'm gonna skip my first one and go to the next one. And I would like to share with everyone that Thursday, September 15th, nationally known comedian Karen Morgan will perform at the County Performing Arts Center. This is a fundraiser for the community foundation of West Georgia's Power of the Purse Women's Giving Circle. This is a sellout, fun event, and if you haven't already got tickets, get some. It's a big thing. The Child Advocacy Center celebrated 10 years of existence this past Friday with a very nice event at the same facility, the Carroll County Performing Arts Center. The CAC exists to champion the needs of sexually, physically, and emotionally abused children in Carroll, Harrelson, and Hurd Counties through prevention, intervention, therapy, and collaboration. And the number of children and families that these folks serve is staggering. I think I saw 2,700 in the last 10 years. I see some of the original charter board of directors in our audience today. I'd like to thank them and Emily Cole, the founder, I believe, and Joel Richards was on the council at right from the start. Thank you very much for your service to it. And last on my list is the Carrollton Cultural Arts Center celebrated a big birthday this couple of weeks ago at 20 years old. And what a great thing that is in our community. We're lucky to have it and Tim Chapman and the fine folks that work there. Thank you.
Mr. Ogden? Okay, well, we did celebrate our 20th year with the Cultural Arts Center and that is a great asset to our community. And it's one of those things that, you know, to have that as an amenity here is great. It provides so many services for so many people, from the little tots to the older people, whatever your talent is, if it's singing or dancing or playing an instrument and, you know, if you like acting or whatever and displaying your art ability. There's so much that we have been able to do and I definitely thank everybody that has contributed to that in the last 20 years, too. Also, this is, and I will do the proclamation in just a moment, but Carroll County is so blessed to have the support that we do with our mental health. We were recently designated as a recovering community organization for our region. I see we have our director here with us, Mr. Miles Neal. We had our ribbon cutting last week and, I mean, it turned out really, really well. There was a great turnout and September is Suicide Awareness Month. And we had a meeting today with Harris County and it was staggering, the number of suicides that we've had in the last year just in Carroll County. And it just breaks my heart to know that there's that many people out there that feel so hopeless. But we have a great mental health program here and I know our recovery organization is going to be just as big as asset as the mental health part of it has been in the past. And I appreciate the whole community because without the community, we would not be able to do this. All of our partners, all the people that work so diligently to make sure that it's been a success. And I do appreciate that. Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just would like to thank our Recreation Department and staff for a great summer over there and they've kicked into fall now with football and everything going on. They've done a great job with camps and programming for the summer. And then I would also like to point out, one of the products of our Carrollton Recreation Department, Cooper Crispell, is slated to start tonight pitching for Tampa Bay Rays when they play the Toronto Blue Jays tonight at about 7:15. So it'll be Cooper's second major league start in his career. So knowing that he was a product of a lot of community coaches and folks in our community is just proud that, makes us, he makes us proud. He represents us well.
That's great. Maybe we'll get out in time to watch him throw that first pitch. Okay. Oh, yeah, right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of agenda items for consideration. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda for consideration?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, the first item on our agenda is proclamation for National Recovery Month. And this, I will read this to you. It says, "Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas recovery from alcohol and other drug use occurs every day through a variety of recovery support resources and treatment programs, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective and people recover across Georgia and around the nation. And whereas millions of people across the United States are in long-term recovery, living happy, healthy, and productive lives. And whereas the 2022 Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community, reminds people in recovery and those who support them that no one is alone in the journey through recovery. Everyone's journey is different, but we are all in it together. And whereas education about recovery and addiction is essential to combating the stigma and discrimination faced by people in recovery is needed by all Georgians, including public health and safety officials, the workforce, older adults, and family. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, Alcohol and Drug Abuse Certification Board of Georgia, the Association of Community Service Boards, and the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, the Georgia Addiction Counselors Association, the Georgia Association of Recovery Residents, and the Georgia Council on Substance Abuse invite all residents in the state of Georgia to participate in National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, I Betty Kason, Mayor of the City of Carrollton, Georgia, by virtue of the authority vested in me to hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as National Recovery Month in Carrollton, Georgia, and I call upon the people of Carrollton, Georgia to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme. Recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, and every community. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand this 12th day of September in the year of our Lord 2022 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 247th." So, thank you all for what you contribute. Our law enforcement community, our mental health community, our substance abuse community, our health services, all of these people recovery contribute to the recovery and the recovery is very important to our community. Okay, all right. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 08-2022, the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Design Standards, and Single Family Town Home Developments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is something that we as a staff have submitted before you guys. It's the culmination of a lot of the different conditions and that we've placed on developments throughout the past year as we would meet and work through the different requirements and the different things that we would like to see when folks bring a development to you guys. Ms. Studdard and her team have worked very hard to put these in place. Again, based on a lot of the recommendations and conditions that we've put in place, but also based on what other municipalities have in their design standard as well. So it was taken before our planning and zoning commission and was voted to recommend approval of the UDL amendments with no one voting in the negative.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone voting on this tonight. I've still got quite a few questions. I'd like to go over on it.
Okay, I have a motion to table the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, it will be tabled at this time. The next item on the agenda is a rezoning request. Central High Road and Centennial Drive, 17.16 acres from C2 General Commercial to mixed-use. The applicant is Middle Street Partners Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. They're requesting, as you stated, to rezone from C2 to mixed-use plan development. They took it before the planning commission. It was tabled at the planning commission and then the next month, the planning commission was not able to meet. So it has come to us tonight to vote on. It is a mixed-use development. You should have the renderings, the elevations in your packet. It was, I think, it was requested, ask how many units we're talking about. Just the breakdown, obviously, without doing any studies and feasibility of what will fit and what they can make work on the site. There'll be approximately 103 one-bedroom units, 123 two-bedroom units, and 26 three-bedroom units on the property. And that's over there, right behind our fire station that we're constructing.
Okay, do I have anyone here to speak for the development?
Can I add right quick? I'm sorry. One of the, one staff recommendation, if approved, would be a traffic impact study there at that location. And any upgrades warranted by the proposed would be at the developer's expense if they required any type of upgrade there in terms of traffic. We also had a, the petitioner has indicated that they would be fine with Mr. Gaston having his billboard, which is about 50 feet back towards the high school, I guess, towards the 27th Bridge, to move it about 50 feet onto that property. So we would need, if you vote to approve and are fine with him doing that, then that would need to be voted as a condition as well.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm John Bass. I'm engineer representing Middle Street Partners, who's planning the development. David's kind of summarized the unit count. But as you can see from the site plan, you know, the area that's being planned, it is mixed-use. It'll be multifamily. There's a live-work building integrated in that. There's also a retail commercial space shown on the plan. The proposal's to include amenities with a clubhouse, pool, dog park. It also has, in my mind, a few architectural elements in here that I think provide some nice design and character for that. That live-work building will be at the corner of Centennial Drive and Central High Road. It's gonna have a good, you know, elevation view for making this feel like a, you know, like a retail storefront look on that Central High Road to give that presence there. Also, there's planning, they're planning to have garages. See those scattered around the site? Those would be another amenity that the residents could rent out to give them some secured storage space. There's also a carriage house concept that's put in there to give even more architectural, you know, element and character in here. It's just a, you know, you can see from the elevations, it's a very attractive-looking project. It's designed well. We understand the concerns with traffic and the developer already has a traffic engineer ready to go on a study should you find that the zoning's acceptable in your minds. We'll be glad to answer any questions if you have following up.
With all of the traffic that's already on that street, South Wire, Chick-fil-A, Home Depot...
With all the traffic on that street, we don't have any idea of the car count? No?
And I would like to remind you that the property today is zoned as C2. So, I mean, it's a commercially zoned piece today. So somebody could come out there and build, you know, whatever complies with that C2 zoning back there. So when we talk about traffic, I think we need to keep that in context that there is development that could go there regardless of the zoning.
Any other questions?
Have we heard from the fire station how this would impact the traffic there at all?
No, sir, we haven't.
That's all the questions I've got.
There is, there has been some discussion about the size of the number of units, total number of units on the project. And the question was asked me is, in order to make the development work, is, are they locked in on that number? Or could the project be smaller? It's a rather large complex for, based on the history of our city and based on the housing study that we've had done recently, it's larger than what their recommendation was for number of units to come online per year. So that was a question that was brought to my attention. Is, are they locked in on that size project? Or is, would they consider doing something that had less units?
Hi, good evening. I'm Ed Alexander. I'm with Middle Street Partners. So to answer that question, the short answer is no. We're not locked into 254 units or even the mix that was stated earlier between one, two, and three-bedroom units. So that is all somewhat flexible. But typically, you know, we try to deliver at least 225 units. And the reason for that is, you know, once we hit that threshold, that's really the sweet spot for us from an operational scale. You know, we have onsite professional management 24/7 and it's, you know, once you get below 225, it's hard to deliver the same experience for the residents and, you know, it's, the quality of that service really starts to diminish quickly. So, you know, I think we could certainly look at a lower unit count, but it starts to make less sense for us once it gets below kind of 225 units.
Another question that, is this a project? I mean, y'all build these projects out. How many, what percentage of them do you retain and manage yourself?
I'd say it's probably 60/40 in terms of retaining that management ourselves, you know. The 40% that we don't, we have very well-respected and experienced third-party managers that, you know, we pay a fee to. So they're groups that are very active, you know, all over the southeast or even nationally that, that's their business day in and day out.
Rob?
You know, our business is, we do some management, but it's more on the development or acquisition kind of asset management side.
Okay, all right. Is there a complex somewhere within driving distance of Carrollton that you've done both recently and something that you may have built in excess of 10 or 15 years ago?
That one's kind of tough. My Middle Street Partners is based in Charleston, South Carolina. So the majority, you know, majority of our development experience has been in and around Charleston. So not a quick drive from Carrollton. Yeah, but a nice place...
Sounds like a road trip.
Yeah, a nice place to visit. Myself and two other principals at the firm used to be at a company called Wood Partners, which is a national developer headquartered in Atlanta. And we developed projects in Noonan, in sort of Gwinnett County, in the Sugarloaf area, up near Kennesaw. The one in Kennesaw was 12, 15 years ago. So those would be examples, I think, of similar style of product, but, you know, I'd caveat that with it's dated. So, you know, some of the design choices might not make sense here in 2022 or 2025.
Sure. Yeah. How old is your firm?
2009 was the founding. So it was, the principals of my firm used to be with a company called Gray Star, which is, you know, the largest rental housing operator in the world, I believe. And they spun out of that company at an interesting time in 2009. And have been, as I said, you know, I would say that Middle Street Partners is more or less a household name in the Charleston and kind of South Carolina market. And we now have developments underway in Georgia and are hoping to be more of a household name, you know, in this region going forward.
What other areas in Georgia are you currently working on projects?
So the ones that are under construction are more in town in Atlanta. So we have a project under construction in Grant Park on the Belt Line, on the southeast part of the trail. We have a project that just started in West Midtown on Bishop Street, if you're familiar with that area by Atlantic Station. And then we have a project in Midtown Atlanta, right by Piedmont Park. So those are all very high-density. You know, two of those are high-rises. The other are five stories of wood frame over podium parking and underground parking. And then we have sites that we are pursuing and under contract. Obviously, there's this one here in Carrollton, also Locust Grove, Calhoun, and Lawrenceville. So those are, I'd say those three, you know, aside from Carrollton that I mentioned that we have under contract are more similar product type where it's kind of three, four-story surface park buildings, whereas the ones that are under construction are high-rise.
Okay. And the number of floors on the units that you're proposing for this location range between three and four stories high, is that correct?
That's correct. And the four-story building is the one that was referenced earlier, the live-work building, which will have, I think it was mentioned, more storefront on the ground floor, more of a commercial feel, which we think is appropriate, you know, just on that front edge of Central High Road there.
So it's on the central, Central High Road?
Yes, it's kind of that, you know, the, it looks kind of like a bluish shaded building at the bottom.
Right. Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you have an idea what the rents might be on something like this?
So the average across the property is sort of 1,550. So that's, you know, ones, twos, and threes, that's just where the average works out. I don't have off the top of my head exactly where those numbers shake out, but, you know, it might be $1,100 to $1,200 for a one-bed. Probably right in that 1,500, 1,600 for a two. And then it could be 1,700 to 1,800 for a three.
Wow.
And, you know, we always think that renting is an attractive appro, sorry, an attractive proposal, certainly in the current market with, you know, home prices and interest rates because, you know, that's, that's really, there's a lot that you get with that rent. You obviously get all of the access to the amenities, which John referenced. That's, you know, dog park, pool, gym, club room. So if you have a, if you have a gym membership now, you could drop that and just access the gym that we have on site for free or baked into that rent. We have managed Wi-Fi across our properties. So day one, you know, you move into your unit and your Wi-Fi and internet is hooked up and ready to go. You don't have to, you know, call AT&amp;T or Xfinity, whoever services your location, and then wait for a technician to come out to your location. So, you know, that's just a couple of examples of reasons why we think that that's an attractive proposition and, you know, a lot of people are sort of renting more by choice now than ever before.
And I'm sure you, your company does a big market study when, before you choose a town to come into and make a major investment. What, who's your target customer for this?
We think it's gonna be young families. You know, it could be couples that maybe don't have a family yet but are looking to start one. They don't have the savings built up to make a down payment just yet. So we think it's predominantly gonna be folks that are renting for the relative short term. You know, we don't expect a ton of people to be renters for 10, 15 years at our property, although, of course, we would, we would welcome that. That's great. So, yeah, I think it's gonna be folks who, Carrollton is where they're gonna live, but they need a year, two, three before they can find a place and find their forever home, set to speed.
My dog Tater was real excited when he heard about the dog park, but I don't think he could afford that kind of rent.
We might give him a discount. Tater, I like that.
You like that?
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, is there anyone here to speak against the rezoning request? So what is the pleasure of the council?
I think this is a very attractive project and ambitious project for our city, but I'd sure like to talk to Fire Department and Traffic folks before I made any motion to proceed. I'd make a motion that we do a little investigating before we make a motion to approve it or disprove it, and so I'd make a motion that we table it for this month.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution 1222, our GFA loan revision. Mr. Brooks, you want to talk about that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. We, we feel like that, we have, we already have the $10 million loan approved by GFA for the settling pond. That's at 0.1% interest, relatively, basically no interest at all on it. But with the escalation of the pricing of materials and labor and gas and diesel and everything that goes into it, we feel like that we're going to need more than that. So we have, we have checked with GFA, and we, we can extend that to 15 million, and we just have to do a resolution where you guys approve that we extend that from 10 million, increase that from 10 million to 15 million, which would be an increase of $5 million. It does not bind us to doing the project, it just, if we get the bids in and it's affordable to do that with the $15 million, then we would have it there.
Okay, so Resolution 12-2022, the recipient is the City of Carrollton, the loan number is DW2020042. At a duly-called meeting of the governing body of the borrower identified above, the borrower held on the 12th day of September 2022, the following resolution was introduced and adopted. Whereas the borrower has borrowed $10 million from the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, the lender pursuant to the terms of the loan agreement, the loan agreement dated December 13th, 2021, between the borrower and the lender, and whereas the borrower's obligation to repay the loan made pursuant to the loan agreement is evidenced by a promissory note dated September 21st, 2021 of the borrower, and whereas the borrower desires to increase the loan amount by 5 million, and whereas the borrower and the lender have determined to amend and modify the loan agreement pursuant to the terms of a modification of promissory note and loan agreement between the borrower and the lender, the form of which has been presented to this meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the borrower that the form, terms, and conditions of the execution, delivery, and performance of the modification are hereby approved and authorized. Be it further resolved by the governing body that the borrower, that the terms of the modification are in the best interest of the borrower, and the governing body of the borrower designates and authorize the following person to execute and deliver and attest respectively the modification and any related documents necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the modification. So do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, the next item on the agenda is board appointments, the redevelopment authority. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, we are, we currently have a redevelopment authority, but it's been inactive and its terms have expired during this inactivity, so we are going to restart this authority. And the following nine members' terms have expired, Steve Minor, Mark Foster, Joel Ballard, Fred O'Neil, Ann Newman, Debbie Neal, Marty Smith, James Hart, Sandra Houston, they, those have expired. We are coming back, asking for approval for the following individuals for one-year terms, Mark Foster, Fred O'Neil, and Gilbert Barker, most of us know him by Bubba Barker. Two-year appointments for Kirby Butler, Eric Simmons, and Becky Cranford, and then three-year appointments for Brian Deal, myself, and Dr. Brendan Kelly from University of West Georgia.
Do I have a motion to approve these board appointments?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the board appointments have been approved. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, meeting adjourned.